Good evening. My name is Jim Peck. I'm the Chair of the Plastow Planning Board, and welcome to the Planning Board meeting of September 2nd, 2020. First thing I need to do is read this very interesting and a little bit boring statement on COVID-19. So bear with me again. I'm getting pretty good at this. Plastow Planning Board, due to the COVID-19 coronavirus crisis, in accordance with Governor Sunu's emergency order number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, is authorized to meet electronically, and these reasons shall be reflected in the minutes. Notice of this electronic meeting was sent to all butters and published in the Eagle Tribune newspaper. The Plastow Planning Board is utilizing the GoToWebinar program or the GoToMeeting platform for this electronic meeting. The public has access to contemporaneously listen if necessary participate in this meeting. The link to access this meeting was provided on the town's website. Please report any issues to jpeck@plastow.com. There is a raise your hand feature of the program that will allow attendees to participate in the discussion. There is also a Q&amp;A box for the public to type questions during the meeting. The public can also send emails with questions or concerns prior to or during the meeting to jpeck@plastow.com. Please note, all questions and concerns typed into the Q&amp;A box or sent via email will be read aloud to become part of the public record. The meeting will also be live on Plastow Access Cable, Channel 17, and will be live streaming on the town's website. So with that done, I'll ask, actually, I'd like to introduce Charlene Gloria.
Gloria.
Charlene Gloria was our new recording secretary.
I'll answer almost anything. Charlene is really good.
Okay. So we welcome you here, and the first thing you can do is do the roll call.
Very good. James Peck?
Here.
Timothy Moore?
Here.
Lori Millet?
Here.
Karen Robinson?
Yeah.
Francine Hart?
Here.
Jeffrey Adams?
Here.
Tom Alberti?
Here.
Did I miss anybody?
Greg Tallon, who's the alternate, is not going to be here. I don't think he's going to be here.
Is he excused?
Well, he doesn't need to be here.
He doesn't need to be here. He's not, you don't have to put, he can just say he's not attending. He's not excused or anything.
And the Planning Director, John?
He's not required to be here.
Okay. And I'm here.
And I also should say that John Cashel contacted me this morning, and he will not be making it. That's the last thing I heard from him, although I wouldn't be surprised if he got a burst of energy and he might show up on the, you know, GoToMeeting. Okay, so the first item on the agenda is, well, I should introduce to the public anyway, Tom Alberti is the new alternate. He's starting tonight. He was sworn in today. So Tom, welcome.
Thank you.
And we look forward to working with you for many years, or months, anyway. First item on the agenda is review and approval of the August 19th, 2020 minutes. You should have them in your folder. They're quite long, so I hope you had a chance to read them. I pinch-hit last time. We didn't have a recording secretary, so I did my best, go back and watch the tape, and this is what I came up with. So if you want to just take a minute or so to take a look at them, or if you're all set, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of August 19th.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of August 19th.
Motion by Tim, second by Karen. Any discussion, amendments, or anything? They're being done. I call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Abstained.
Motion passes, and we move on to the only item we have tonight, and that's a workshop item. I can't remember exactly when the last workshop we had was. I think it was last November, wasn't it?
I think it might have been last year.
Yeah, it was last year. So with COVID and everything, and then the summer, and we had some long meetings, hearings, we really haven't had a workshop. So John Cashel actually recommended that we talk about the rules, the Planning Board rules, and so that's the sole subject tonight. You should have the rules in your package. And I also included something that looks like this you should have, which is a kind of a, all the different, not all of them, but most of the RSAs that are pertinent to the rules. Just so you have the actual RSA. So one of the things I was going to say about the rules is, these rules have been in effect for the Planning Board for 24 years. And before I get into the rules, I wanted to talk a little bit about the history of the Planning Board, if I can find my notes. If you look at the handout that I gave you, the first thing in the handout is a, from the 1956 Town Report, and it shows you that that's the report from the Planning Board. It was not short, Tim, back then. It was not as long as it is today. It was just short and sweet to say that the Planning Board was formed in 1956 and listing the members. At that time, the members were appointed by the selectmen, and one of them was a selectman and four were appointed. It was not, they were not elected at that time. Fast forward to 1980, I'm sorry, 1994. In 1994, a petition warrant was put forward to change the election, change from, if you look at the second page of the handout I gave you, you can see that warrant at the bottom. It's warrant number 32 in 1994. And what the town had to do is, when they decided they wanted to elect them, and it's actually, you can see it's a petition by George Melvin and others at the bottom, that was put forward to elect Planning Board members at that time. And at that time, it was going to be six elected members plus the ex officio at that time. That warrant did pass, 8365. So ever since then, we've had an elected Planning Board. And I believe in 1996, Tim, you were the first Chair of the, the first elected Planning So a couple of years later, actually, 1998, you can see at the bottom of the page, I wrote, Article 9849, the total number of members were reduced to five from seven. So instead of having four, six elected, you had four elected and still have an ex officio.
That was because we couldn't get a quorum often.
Yeah, yeah. So that's a little bit of the history. I want to just kind of, as we go through the rules, what I'm going to suggest, if nobody has an objections, just take it from the beginning. First of all, I want to get out of here by 8:30, no later than 8:30, hopefully earlier. We're going to have the continuing discussion. This is not the final, you know, review of the rules. I suspect we'll have some time on the 16th. On the 16th, at this point in time, we only have one hearing, and it's too late to actually post any more public hearings, so we have one hearing. I think it's on Skip's Garage, Change of Views. That shouldn't take a lot of time, so I suspect that next time, we can add the rules and continue our discussion. So tonight is meant to be a healthy discussion of the rules, if you will. And, you know, it's good to review these rules. I mean, you could call them bylaws, I suppose. Most other groups, they call them bylaws, but the reason they're called Rules of Procedure is because the Office of Strategic Initiative at the State of New Hampshire put out a proposal years ago that said everybody, every Planning Board should have Rules of Procedure. And they gave an example, exhibit of what should be in that Rules of Procedure. And ever since then, just about every town that I've looked at has Rules of Procedure. So it's very important, you know, these rules, you know, if we're going to have rules, and I, you know, I asked Tim before, have we always abided by all these rules? And your answer was, Tim, yeah, we, these are important rules, and we try to abide by them. So it's important that we have rules that fit. If they don't fit, we should probably make changes. So I have a few suggestions for changes tonight. We talked earlier about the fact that you need to have two readings of those changes. And, you know, if this is not the first reading, the next time could be the, I'm not in any rush to, like, say, we need the first reading tonight. We can talk about them, and then we can, you know, decide, you know, whether we need to. The other question I have for you, Tim, is, if you look at the OSI suggested rules, the last paragraph in there for amendments, it says you have a public hearing for, one public hearing, it didn't say two, when you have changes to rules. But our rules, for example, the last part of our rules, if you go to the very last page, it says, it doesn't say anything about a hearing. It just says, it just says there'll be two readings of it. So I'm going to, one of the suggestions I'm going to make is that we add to the last section 225-8, which is a very ending paragraph, that we have a public hearing. I think it's important to have a public hearing on the changes to rules. And I have some wording to that effect. So with that introduction, I thought what we do is just start right at the beginning and walk through this. And as we walk through it, I'm going to refer to this handout that I gave you, which has the actual RSAs in it, so you can read the RSAs. And to a large extent, the verbiage in our rules is right out of the RSA, word for word. So let's start at the top. First thing to note is that they were adopted in 1996, amended twice, 2006, and some of us were here for an amendment in 2019, and there was some discussion at that time, so. So anyway, if you start, if we go through each paragraph, I'd like us to read it and then decide whether we need to make any changes. And if, you know, if I've read it and I don't think there'll be a change, I still would like to read it. I'll say, I don't think there needs to be a change. Unless anybody objects, we'll move to the next paragraph. Does that work for everybody? Okay? All right. So 225-1, authority, these rules, a procedure adopted under the authority of New Hampshire revised statutes annotated 676-1. I believe I have that in the handout. I think it's number four. Page four. Number three. And that's, you know, all it really says is, every local land use board shall adopt Rules of Procedure. That's it. And it's important to understand what, if you go to number four on my handout, what does local land use board mean? This defines exactly what a local land use board is. 672-7, which is number, handout number four, if you're following me and the handouts, I passed out. So it says, local land use board means a planning board, obviously, historic district commission, which we don't have in Plastow, inspector of buildings, I didn't realize that would be a land use board, and I'm not sure if we really apply it that way, a building code board of appeals, doesn't apply to us, and then the ZBA, or any other board. So that's what a local land use board is. So the first paragraph, I think, you know, there's no need to change it unless anybody objects. I think that's pretty much a no-brainer. Okay, so the second paragraph says, members, so consists of five members, four of whom should be elected, fifth member should be a selectman designated, blah de blah de blah. So I don't think there's any need to change paragraph A there, unless anybody else does. If not, I'll just keep talking here. The second paragraph, paragraph B, selection, qualification, term, removal, and filling of vacancies shall conform to RSA 673. And I think I do have 673 in here, some parts of it. I think it's number five in the handout, establishment of local land use boards. And that just says establishment, and there's a whole bunch of other things in 673 that talks about qualification, term, removal. I didn't put that in your handout. Actually, I put a few in there. We'll come to them in a minute. So that's right out of the RSA. Subparagraph one, parentheses one, training, within 12 months of assuming office for the first time, any member is encouraged to complete at least six hours of training. Now, in the RSA, it doesn't say that you need six hours. I think that's something we added. The RSA just says that you need to get training. Each member needs to get training. I think that's a good requirement, and I wouldn't change that. Sorry, Francine.
I agree with you. However, it says, offered by the Office of Strategic Initiatives. I've never heard of that. And we, do you think, does this board think that that sentence needs to be fleshed out a little bit by giving a little bit more information as to?
Oh, the Office of, I can explain, maybe Tim knows more about it, but I didn't, I didn't recognize that name, but they put together the planning handbook that's used by all planning boards.
So I guess my thought is, do you think that needs to be specified or at least fleshed out in this six hours of training thing? Because when you give this to someone, you know, I don't know if Tom knows where to go or what to do or what he's supposed to be trained on.
Yeah.
So that may, you may want to think about fleshing that out a little bit more, but that's just, I'm just offering that out to the board.
There's a little bit more when you, when you come to the responsibilities of the planning staff. It talks about the type of planning a little bit further on, so maybe we could wait and look at that if that's not enough.
Okay. I think Karen had the answer.
Sorry?
I wanted to know more specifically, where do you go for it?
Yeah.
And where, you know, that's not mentioned at all anywhere.
Go for what?
Go for the six hour training.
In the responsibilities?
Oh, okay. Wasn't.
Under, these pages aren't numbered, but it's, let me find it.
I went over the old one.
Under planning staff, which is, I'm going to say, one, two, three, page four, under duties, then it says, planning staff, it, I think on the next page, item number?
Right, I have another one.
What page? Which one is it?
Four, from this one. The planning, right, planning staff?
Yeah, there's something about education or training.
I read through it. I have an old one here.
Yeah, but that has to do with planning staff, not board members, right?
No, but it talked about the type of planning. Oh, it says, on the next page, number 14, shall from time to time prepare planning, training updates for board members. And somewhere else in here, it talks about the type of training, I thought. Oh, I know, it's actually in the RSA, so maybe we ought to just pull it out of the RSA.
Hey, would you help us? Have any?
I agree.
Well, the only thing I would caution you on that is, I mean, there's all kinds of training that comes up. OSI has, typically has a spring conference, and there's always one session, I think, that's called Planning Board 101 or something like that, and ZBA 101. However, those are usually on a Saturday, which is, you know, not bad because it's a full day, so you get there and you focus on, you know, a topic at hand. On the other hand, Saturdays are hard to come by, you know? Not everybody wants to sit down for another eight hours on Saturday, you know, much less be away from family and whatever. Then there was a series of law lecture series that NHMA did, and those seem like the sessions that we might want to attend were on Wednesdays. So we did, we did say, if somebody wanted to attend one of those, that would be excused from the Planning Board meeting to get the training. Obviously, now everyone could go. I mean, we'd still need to have a quorum and conduct business, but as those things cycled around, different people could, you know, have an opportunity to do that. Is, I think most of you were here a couple of years ago. We had Steve Buckley come down from NHMA and give a training.
Right.
And?
He came here.
He came here, yeah. So there's, there's all kinds of things, and it doesn't necessarily have to be Planning Board. I mean, you might go to a session that talked about town streets and rights of way, or low-impact construction, you know? So there's, I mean, all kinds of topics that help, and to try to codify that, formalize it in some fashion is pretty, pretty tough. So I think that's why, if we ever had those words in there, you know, I think we took them out because it was.
So you're suggesting maybe we leave them as broad as it is and not edit it?
That's what I would say, yeah. I mean, I like the six hours. I mean, I think that's good.
I think six hours is good. The only thing I would say is, if you look at 673-3A, which is on item number eight, I sent, I passed out the actual RSA. It does say, the Office of Strategic Initiatives may provide training which may be designed in a variety of formats, but not limited to web-based, distance learning, traditional classroom, and self-study. So it does elaborate upon it. I'm not sure if we needed it in our rules, so. Just want to know what you think. Do we need, do you think we ought to add anything, Francine?
Can we put, as offered by the Office of Strategic Initiatives? So at least people know where to go to get this stuff?
Okay.
Just as a suggestion.
Well, but then if you, if you put that in, and then NHMA provides a course, then that doesn't count, because your bylaws or Rules of Procedure have said only as offered by OSI. So.
Well, maybe we'd say, as offered by the OSI or other state agencies or something to that effect.
Or Planning Commission, or?
RPC, the seminar up in Concord.
DES.
Yeah, I mean, any other state agencies or, I don't know what other word to use, state agencies.
Then maybe just say, as offered by state agencies?
Yeah, just as offered by OSI or other state agencies.
I was just wondering if they can, if there's any people that come down here that actually have, you know, discussions? Because that would automatically, you know?
Your question is just, is there any? You're not suggesting we put it in the change, yeah? Right. I mean, it's a question, because you're new, you want to know whether they can come down, right?
Well, you can make those arrangements. There's usually a cost, and I don't remember, but I'll say, Steve Buckley, I think that, I think that was $500 to have him.
Yeah, he came down here, and it was not just our town, it was, we shared it with other towns, so.
Right, because we, we mentioned it to RPC that we were looking at having Steve come down, they agreed that would be a good thing for the whole Planning Commission. So they ended up picking up the tab out of their training, so it didn't cost Plastow anything, other than electricity to have the meeting here.
Right.
So that worked out very well, and, you know.
I think you've only been here a few meetings. I think that Dee is going to do stuff like that. She's going to, she's pretty good at saying, will we have this, or she arranges, you could even ask her, say, you know, Tom and you want to get some training, and she would provide that training. I don't necessarily think we need to change the rules, though, other than the change we just made.
And just so the newer members know, too, we consolidated training in one line item budget, so instead of having every department have a few hundred bucks for training, we consolidated it, and I think it's about $10,000, Laurie. So any department can take advantage of that, so we certainly can do that as well.
Okay, so to continue on with the rules itself, we should just add that, as offered by the OSI or other state agencies. I'll spell out OSI, because I didn't know that was what it was called before either, until I read the RSAs.
It had a number of, it used to be Office of State Planning, which made perfect sense. They got rid of that term, and then.
So that's the only change, the training, subparagraph one, and then oath of office, I didn't see anything there we needed to do there. That's right out of the RSA. Terms of ex officio of board members, that doesn't need to be changed. Number D, a letter D. Terms of elected and appointed members, that doesn't need to be changed, I don't think. Enrollment number and terms, that's in accordance with 673-6. I did, I think I did include 673-6 in your package, so we're following that, basically.
It's not here.
In your handout. It's number?
It's in there.
Number nine, in this handout here.
Close from 673-1 to 673-12.
It's here.
It's page nine.
Yeah, handwritten nine on the packet. You find it?
Yep.
Okay. So at the top of the next page, up to five alternates. That's right out of the RSA. It's up to five. I don't think we have to specify two or three, just leave it up to five. And, you know, maybe a future board wants five, I don't know. I don't think we need five, but, you know, we have to, it's quality, not quantity.
Exactly.
Membership vacancies, I didn't see any changes in that. That just follows the RSA for an elected or appointed member, right out of the RSA, so. Unless anybody sees anything there. Service on other boards, okay, if you look at handout 10, I gave you that handout, it's RSA 673-7, and the service on other boards, one and two, in our rules, is taken right from that, almost word for word, if not word for word. But I think it's important that everybody on the board understand what the rules are. So let's read it. Service on other boards and commissions shall be in accordance with 673-7. Board members may serve on any other Plastow board or commission, provided that such multiple memberships does not result in more than two board members, including alternates serving on the same board or commission. And then it goes on to say that only one board member or alternate may serve on any other land use board, define that as ZBA, basically, that's the only other we have, or on the Conservation Commission. So any member of this board, you could, only one of us can be on the Conservation Commission. Tim's on the Conservation Commission, so that takes care of it. None of us could be on the Conservation Commission. As far as the ZBA is concerned, I talked to Joyce Ingersen. She's the last one in town that was both on the ZBA and the Planning Board, which I found a little bit strange, but that's allowed, and, you know, so that can, that can happen. You know, somebody here could be on the ZBA. So I don't think we need to change it, just recommend everybody know that that's, that's the way it works.
Yeah, the only thing I would add there to important, it reads boards and commissions, so that specifically, like, the Recycling Committee?
Yeah.
Would be exempt from this, because it's not a board or commission.
Oh, I see.
So that, there's a distinction between committee and commission.
Oh, okay. Good point.
It is a good point, yeah.
Yeah, because a lot of our groups are committees. They do specifically say committee.
Yeah.
Meeting attendance, we did change this last year to make it a little bit more stricter. The only change I want to make, and I'm going to suggest, is in paragraph one, board members, ex officio and alternates are expected to attend all meetings. I think that's still, you know, what we want. However, in an event that they are unable to attend, I'm going to scratch a member of the board administrative staff, I'm going to change it to the Planning Board Chair should be contacted in person or by phone prior to 3:30 PM. And the reason for that is, I think it's important that the chair know who's going to be there, because, you know, I'm going to have to designate somebody or whatever. So I'm just asking.
Well, the administrative assistant would let the chair know that.
What's that?
The administrative assistant would notify the chair of an absentee member if they called in.
Okay, well, that hasn't been happening, so I'm suggesting we change it.
Who's been missing?
I'm suggesting we change it to, directly to the chair.
Dee is always informed, whoever was chair.
I didn't know it when you were absent the other day. She didn't tell me the other day.
The other day, for what?
I just think it would be better for the chair.
Yeah, yeah. It goes right to the source, and then we don't have two or three people in the loop.
Exactly.
And Dee doesn't have to get involved. She's got better things to do than that.
Yeah, she's got enough to do.
It's also on vacation, isn't she?
Yeah. Yes, good point.
Yeah. And I know, everybody has my, I now have an email, and I know that Greg Tallon suggested that the email be changed from my name at Plastow to Planning Board Chair, which I like that idea.
Yeah, yeah.
And, you know, either way, you would know who to send it to, and I, my phone, I'll give you all my phone, so I would know right away that somebody's not showing up.
Yeah. I mean, I like that. We had, when we first, well, I'll say, when we first started doing emails, I'd take that with a little bit of grain of salt, but we didn't have names, so you didn't send it to Mike Dormand, you sent it to the Building Inspector at Plastow.com, Rec Director at Plastow.com.
And I think we're going to.
And then, for some reason, I don't know, people wanted to see their name in lights or something, so they changed all of that. So now it goes to people's names, and when the positions change, you have the wrong email address.
Francine?
So the board is working on exactly that, and I think what we're working on for the budget is actually to do exactly what you had done before, is chair of the blah blah blah, so whoever takes that chairman spot, we don't have to keep changing it, and it's probably going to be less expensive, too. So we're working on it. My, our IT gurus, Jay and Greg, are working on it.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's a good change, I think.
Yeah, I think so, too.
Okay, so that change, again, to read it back, as, instead of a member of the board administrative staff, scratch that and put the Planning Board Chair.
Yeah.
And then the rest of it kind. And then the rest of it kind of, I don't see any need to change it, it's the same thing. You're just notifying the chair as opposed to the administrative staff.
Now, would you, you want to leave it just by phone or...
Contact it in person or by phone. We just leave it the way it is and then...
Okay.
I'll make sure people have, you know, everybody knows my email, jpeck@plastow.com.
Yeah.
And I'll give out my phone number.
Okay.
Maybe after the meeting, not before, putting it in the public.
[laughing].
Yeah. Okay, so the next, the next paragraph, I think we actually changed this last night, last, last time in December. I kind of remember a discussion about this, and I think it's good the way it is. Any member not leaving a message who does not attend shall be considered unexcused, and it shall be noted in the minutes. So in the minutes, instead of saying excuse, it says unexcused. That's, that's all it is. The absence of a board member from three unexcused consecutive meetings or from attendance at 65% of all regularly scheduled meetings in a calendar year without just cause will cause the board to consider requesting the removal, replacement of that member. I think that's, that's, I think we ought to leave that in there. I mean, it's a little bit harsh, but, yeah.
I think only once or twice...
Yeah, it's never happened.
Have we done that.
Yeah.
And it wasn't the person missed three in a row and we said, hey, selectmen.
It accumulated.
That person had missed like 15 out of the last 20. I mean, you know, it was...
I just think it's only fair to the board that, you know, you get somebody who's going to be there, and it's probably fair to that person too. At this point, they, they maybe have some issues they need to resolve, so.
Well, I mean, more importantly is when people don't regularly attend, and hearings are particularly long, big project, the hearings are continued, you miss out now.
Right. And then you show up the next meeting, you're not really sure what you're doing.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll leave that. The third one, the same thing on an ex officio, I guess. I read through that and I didn't see any need to change that. So we're good for two pages, we only have eight to go. We may finish before seven, 7:30. I doubt it. Removal of members shall be in accordance with 673-13. You know, that's, you know, right out of the RSA, so I don't think we need to, to change that. It's almost word for word RSA. Okay, we move on to organization. Officers, the officers of the board, the first one, yeah, majority of the board votes for, for the officers. We only elect a chair and a vice chair. Some boards I found actually elect a recording secretary. That's a smaller town, so they would designate somebody to be recording secretary. That doesn't really work here, and we have, you know, a hired secretary.
Yeah.
A professional secretary. No offense to people who've taken notes. So I don't think there's any need to change one, two, and three there. Okay, so now we get into administrative staff. In the term that's used here, it's, it's changed over the years because the support staff for the planning board has changed. And if you go back a few years, all we had was a planning director. If I'm, if I'm not, correct me if I'm wrong, Tim, but if you go back to, for example, before 2014, 2014, Lee Komornik was the planning director, there wasn't, there wasn't an admin assistant. Yeah, we've had, and then, then Greg Jones came in, and then Greg Jones was there through 2016. And then after Greg left, Dee kind of went in there, she was in the Building Department, and then she, she became what was called the Planning Coordinator, not the Planning Director, but Planning Coordinator. And then obviously today we have a, an admin. She became an admin, Administrative Assistant in 2018, and then John Cashel came in in 2018. So now we have basically two support staff, the admin assistant and the planning director. And now if you looked at the website, it does list Mike Dormand as a support staff for us, but I don't believe that's actually true. He doesn't, I mean, he answers questions, but he's not really support staff.
Right. Yes, he's, it's a different, different level, if you will.
And, you know, what I'm going to say about this is the town manager, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, I'm just wondering, do we really need to list it out or can we just put planning staff? Do we have to list all these...
The types of positions?
Titles and, yeah, I don't know.
I, I don't know why we listed them, but, you know, maybe you can just say, instead of administrative staff, say planning staff under B, change it to planning staff.
Kind of generalize.
And then under number one, just scratch IE, all those different listed, particularly Recording Secretary, because the Recording Secretary is now handled differently. The Recording Secretary is a contract position, and I'm going to suggest we break that out separately, not under the Planning Staff, that is separate, Recording Secretary. So Laurie's suggesting that in paragraph one, we scratch from IE, Planning Coordinator through and/or consultants?
Yeah, just planning staff.
And just leave the sentence as it is?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Does anybody have any objection to that? I'm sorry, Karen.
Yeah, because, you know, it changes all the time, and I don't think the town realizes, you know, what people are therefore and what is their particular title. For example, when you're talking Planning Director, how is he picked? How is he, you know, I think there's a lot of misunderstanding in the town of how these people are there and what is their position. So I think it is important, if you're going to list them, under Administrative Staff. I think they should be listed, but there's got to be some explanation on how they are not elected, they're appointed, and by who.
The problem is, it changes. You know, let's say Mark decides to change it, this is prerogative, he, you know, they report to him. So let's say he changes it from Planning Director to planning, what he had before, Planning Coordinator. So the, you know, what Laurie's suggesting is if you put that in there, it's changing all the time. You could add Planning Director, I suppose, to that, and that might cover all the bases.
Yeah.
Francine?
And, and what Karen said dovetails exactly into making sure that the RSAs for the Planning Board dovetail with other RSAs. And there's RSA 376, which discusses the authority and responsibilities of the town manager. And so those things all have to be dovetailed together so that they don't conflict with each other.
Yeah.
And so to your point, he has a personnel roster with job descriptions, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, and you might want to put, that personnel report directly to the town manager pursuant to 376, because technically they all do report to him. And so you want to make sure that's nice and clean and, and consistent across the board.
I think number three says that.
Yeah.
All personnel deemed necessary by the board shall be town employees, and as such will be part of the town's personnel plan that defines supervisory roles, wages, benefits, hours, employment, and all other...
It defines their roles, but it doesn't define to whom they report.
And it doesn't define their responsibilities.
Right. Exactly, exactly, exactly.
Well, the responsibilities are on the next page. It's a little bit disjointed here because all the duties that we require are on the next page. So it's a little bit out of order, if you will.
Well, then maybe we should consolidate it and put it in an order that makes sense.
Yeah.
And the other thing, I'd like to interject, and maybe I'm just jumping ahead, but you know how, on number three, it says all personnel deemed necessary by the board shall be town employees. I would like to add in there or insert in there, or contracted by the town, because we have a lot of...
Right.
Contracted vendors, like our note taker, so she's not an employee.
Well, I was going to suggest that, particularly for the Recording Secretary, that that's true. So we could just add that, or contracted, what is it, contracted employee?
Or contracted by the town, right.
Right.
Yeah.
And that covers us.
Now, do you want to add in that item number three, 376 there, or do you want to put that referenced or...
I, I think it's important to do that. I don't know what you guys think.
Maybe we just add at the end, in accordance with RSA 376.
Or report directly to town manager pursuant to 376, RSA 376, right. And then that way, everybody's all covered, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And there's a clear chain of command and reporting authority, and you guys can find out exactly where it is.
Just to, for my benefit, in the, in number one, did we scratch that or not scratch that listing of all the...
Well, I mean, I would say, as Francine suggested, we, we change the first sentence, shall be town employees or contracted by the town.
That's number three, Tim. I was referring to number one.
Laurie, can you read what you, you had suggested for...
I, I just wanted to have planning staff and not planning coordinator.
Just, she's taking out the IE.
Taking out the...
Okay.
The laundry list of what they could be.
So you wanted to say the board by majority vote may define the responsibilities of any non-member planning staff as deemed necessary, right?
Without putting in what they want.
Is that what you're looking for? Yeah, that sounds good to me.
And the town manager determines whether he has a director, whether he has a...
Right.
Admin, whatever he wants to call it, he can call it.
Right.
Jim?
The other good thing, just one other thing, Tom, taking Recording Secretary out of there is important because Recording Secretary is handled a little bit differently, so it's not, and I think by adding it as a contractor, I think you got it covered.
I think so too, and it's generic enough to do so.
Sorry, Tom?
No, I was going to say that, you know, someone from outside of the board, especially like myself who's just joining, if I read the, the first paragraph that says the board might by majority vote may define the responsibilities of any non-member planning staff, to me that says that we define the roles that John Cashel, Dee Voss, and Mike Dormand should have versus the town manager defining their roles or responsibilities.
Well, that's a good, that's a good point, because when, I had an exchange of emails with, with Mark Pearson, I respect, you know, what, what he's saying back to us, but I was referring to RSA 673-16. That's what you're kind of alluding to, Tom, number 12 in my handout. And, you know, I hadn't read this before, but, you know, if you read it, it says each local land use board may appoint such employees as it deems necessary for its work, who shall be subject to the same employment rules or other corresponding civil employees of the municipality. And it goes on to say each board may also contract with planners, engineers, architects, and other consultants. Just let me finish it. The expenditures of the board, exclusive of guests, reimbursements, or amounts, shall be within the amounts appropriated for the purpose of the local legislative body, which may provide such funds, equipment, and accommodations as it deems necessary or advisable for the board's work. So I think what it's saying, in reference to what you're saying, Tom, this says that the planning board can, I guess, petition or, I don't know what the right word is, or go to the town manager and say, this is what we need, town manager, these are the things we need, and we need these people, we need to get planners, we need to do, and we get a budget, because the town has a budget for the planning board. It's a specific account. I want to say it's 4191, but if, every year when the budget is done, there's a planning board budget. So there's kind of a, I just wanted to air out that confusion in my mind and what Tom is saying. Mark said it's non-barring, this is non-barring, but I think what Mark is saying is, you can't tell me who does what. I determine who does what. Not that I won't provide you with that, because he, he said, I will provide you with all these things, but you can't tell me that Dee does this, or John does that, or whatever. So I think that's where the difference is.
Well, I think the, the distinction is, we define the, the jobs that we think are necessary.
What we need.
What we need. Then it's up to the town manager to staff, to, well, work with the budget and fund them, and also provide people to fill those roles and responsibilities that we define. So we don't, we don't take, Mark doesn't come to us and say, okay, you, planning board, you can have three staff members. Then it's, it's not up to us to say what each of those staff members, each of those people can do, rather, it's, it's the reverse. So we define the positions. If that's acceptable to Mark, then he funds it and assigns...
Right.
...a staff to do that job that we've defined.
Or, or he could go back to, he went back to me on the Recording Secretary, he said, Jim, don't you think it makes more sense for you to get involved in hiring a Recording Secretary? I said, yeah, that makes sense. And, you know, you, you look at the, you know, you get involved in the hiring, and that person essentially reports to you as opposed to another person, it's a contract person.
Yeah.
So there's a negotiation that goes on from the town manager and the board.
Karen.
Karen?
Okay, I guess what, what really bothered me in the beginning was that the town will watch our meeting, say, for example, and they'll say, now, I didn't elect him, so where, where is his position and what is he doing? So the town does not realize how much the manager, town manager, is hiring these people. Why? Because, you're telling me because the planning board has asked for these people? Is that what you're saying?
No, what we're saying is the planning board, and I think what Tim is saying, and we're all saying, we define what we need. We say we need, and unfortunately, again, it's out of order, all these duties, under duties in the next section, all these different things that we need that Dee does. We go to him and we say, we need all these things, Mark. And Mark says, I'm going to hire a part-time planning director at whatever hours, and I'm going to have a full-time administrative assistant. That's how I'm going to meet your needs. And he can do that. So he determines how he will staff those duties. That's what I'm saying.
I don't know how to make those duties then, I guess, without understanding to people who are asking. There's a lot of people that don't understand, right?
Well, I would think, and just one more thing, Francine, I think the way it's supposed to work, and this is my understanding, there's a job description for Dee. We haven't seen that job description, but I would imagine it would include a lot of these duties.
Mm-hmm.
There's a job description for Mr. Cashel, I would hope.
Yes.
And it would say what Mr. Cashel does. And that's Mark's responsibility to make sure he does those things. It's kind of a little strange here because in a perfect world, those people will report to us. That, that's not how it, doesn't work that way.
That's, I...
It doesn't work that way.
But why doesn't the planning board know what's going on?
Yeah.
[laughing].
Well, there's, I mean, there's...
No, go ahead.
There's a couple, couple reasons. One is, there's planning, I mean, take the planning director's position. There's a lot more work that needs to be planned for in the town than what goes on in the planning board. Now, the fact that John's only here part-time kind of limits that, but, I mean, when you think about Potawatara, I mean, that's, that's a huge planning exercise that could easily fall into that jurisdiction, once it, once it gets up and running, you know. There's, uh, street repairs and the whole transportation thing. Nobody really did that. It was like a one-man band saying, hey, you know, we need to do something over here. So there's a lot of things a planning director typically does. One of them is to assist the, the planning board in terms of consulting, see what other towns do, recommendations on zoning changes, subdivision changes, et cetera, et cetera. But he's a consultant that the town hired to help us do our job, whereas the planning staff that we're talking about in this paragraph is a job that we define that we need.
Right.
And ask the town to fund and find a person to do that.
In fact, I don't believe in our rules, there's any reference at all currently to the planning director, or he does or anything. Should there be?
Yes.
I don't know. Karen's suggesting yes, but the planning director is absent from our rules.
I, I don't...
I mean, how do I answer these people? They ask me, who, who is Cashel? Where, where are you from?
Have him contact Jim.
That's, that's really another question, that's not really...
No, but it does, because we don't list him as his position. That's what I wanted...
Well, I think what Tim's saying is he's not part of planning staff.
Exclusively not planning board, no.
He's not included in these responsibilities. He's something that, he's another position that Mark came up with that wasn't even in what we needed. But the real question is, do we as a planning board need a planning director? I think. I would say yes. So, I don't know, Francine?
So don't forget, too, all of the boards and committees do require some similar positions like quote, "recording secretary." The board has one, the budget committee now has one, and we have one. So whether they, these are all similar job descriptions and responsibilities regardless of what board or committee they're on. And so that's where that job description comes in and is defined. And I know that one of the first things Mark did when he came here is he reviewed all of the personnel policies and all the job descriptions. So those are all current and up to date. So if there's something that this board needs that's exclusive to this board, like, you know, a planning director or someone else, that's where we would have to go back and say, okay, Mark, you need to create another job and a job description and a set of responsibilities, et cetera. But there's a lot of generic positions that all boards and committees share. So I don't know if that helps or makes it worse, I don't know.
That's true, and I think it would be useful, by the way, if it's possible for us to see what those job descriptions are for.
I don't, yeah, I don't think that would be an issue. Let me write that down in my little fucking wagon, I'll check with Mark. All right, what would you like to see? What job descriptions would you like to see?
Job description for the planning director and the administrative assistant.
Okay. Administrative assistant is gonna be generic, I'm gonna tell you that right now, because we have three of them, you know, we have several of them.
It doesn't have all these duties in here?
Well, that's where you, as a planning board, comes in, and you can redefine.
It's not in the job description, then.
I don't believe it is. An administrative assistant has a generic, this is what an administrative assistant does, but if you want her to do, or he or she to do more on this board, that's where it's up to this board to define more responsibilities to that person.
So up to this point, probably Dee got a direction from this, these rules.
I'm sure she did.
After a while, she knows what the things you need to do.
All right, so you want a job description for planning director and who else, an admin assistant?
Assistant to the planning board.
Okay, well, it might not be admin assistant to the planning board, it just might be admin assistant.
Okay.
Okay, but I'll get you those.
That is her present title.
Right, it is.
Planning board administrative assistant.
That's right, that is her title.
Okay, but what I'm saying is there may not be that specific job description, so, and I don't know that.
And does the planning department only pay her? Because she does wear many hats. Where does, because I noticed now she's on the water department. What's her title on the water department?
I think she's an administrative assistant on that, too, but what we've tried to do is whatever time that she is on a particular board or committee, we allocate that time to that department's budget. So when she's on the water department, we're taking her time and whatever else she does, getting permits and whatever, we take that out of the water department budget. So, because that's the only fair way to do it.
But if we budget, if, and the budget was done for 2020, her entire salary was budgeted as part of the planning board. So if she works for the water department, what did?
There's an accounting adjustment for it, just like with, do you remember Lori Sadowitz, who has three jobs?
Right.
We broke that out a couple of years ago on the budget so that she has HR responsibilities in that department, she has, she's an assistant finance director in the finance budget, so we break them out, so we try to make it as transparent and matching up everything as closely as possible so people can really see what departments expend. And we're gonna be doing that shortly, very shortly. So, you know, the board will double-check that, and the budget committee will triple-check it after we give it to them.
So back to the changes to the rules here, I just want to point out that item number two under, now we changed it from administrative to planning staff, I think that second item is very, very important. Is it expected that not all the positions described in B1 above, now we scratched them, so maybe, I guess we don't, we would have to modify that, but it says all duties described below, it doesn't say below, but that's where they are, will be covered by available personnel. I think that's very critical to say that, that in effect, all the duties below will be provided. In other words, we will go to the town manager and say, we need these duties, and he will provide them all. How he organizes, that's up to him. Does that make sense? So we need to change that second thing to take out, since we scratched the positions.
Well, are we gonna still have the positions with their duties, or, I mean, their?
Well, I would change, I would change that to read, it is expected that all duties described below, which is on the next page, will be covered by available personnel. Is that all right?
Will it have a job description of the duties, planning directors and planning assistants?
I'm starting to stay away from specific job because he could organize it differently.
But what's wrong with the verbiage now? That does just exactly what you just said.
Say again?
The wording, the verbiage of number two fulfills what you just said, as it is.
Well, because we scratched the listing of the positions in number one, we can't refer to those positions. So I'm saying we scratch in from, is it, is expected that all duties described will be covered, all duties described below will be covered by available personnel.
Yeah, I mean, actually, if we, if we make the list in number one, just one, planning staff, we don't even need paragraph two.
Yeah, you don't need that, that's right.
Because when we listed them, we realized, well, we're not gonna have six people working for the planning board, we're not gonna fill all of those positions. So we added paragraph two to say not all of those positions would be filled, but all of the, all of duties will be, responsibilities will be done by the available personnel.
I think that saying all responsibilities would be done is an important thing. Do you think that's covered in paragraph one?
Yeah, because, I mean, this is, 225-3 is organization, so this says who we have, how we're organized. The next section, 224, is duties. So for the officers and the planning staff and the committees, their duties are defined in the next section.
The only thing that brought me up short on that, Tim, is if you look at that paragraph one under B, it says we may define those responsibilities. That doesn't mean that the town manager has to provide all of them by available personnel. We define them, doesn't mean he has to provide it. So I like to add, I like to leave that in there, maybe in paragraph one, all duties described will be covered by available personnel. It's kind of, it's kind of saying to him that, you know, all these duties need to be provided, not that we define them. You know, if we define them, he could say, well, that's not, that's not a duty that I'm gonna provide. So I think he should provide all the duties that we asked for. If that, if you think that's okay without putting that in, I just think it strengthens the request, if you will. I don't know, everybody else thinks?
All right, well, I mean, let's, you know, let's read through the whole thing, we can come back and revisit that and see if it's redundant or.
Yeah, we're gonna come back and visit it. I'm just saying that, you know, maybe we can scratch number two, but maybe bring that, all duties will be covered by available personnel into number one.
Exactly.
Somehow, we can wordsmith it, whatever.
Yep, yep.
Okay. All right, so we made it through.
You're still not gonna be filling necessarily all of the positions either.
No, we're not filling, no, what we're saying is all the duties will be covered.
Right, but you said you were eliminating the first line. Yes or no?
What's that?
You just said.
Jeff, I'm talking about duties, not positions. I'm saying all the duties on the next page will be covered. I'm not saying positions, I'm saying duties. All the duties will be covered by available personnel.
That's the second line.
Yeah, so, so the way it reads now is in paragraph one, we have listed one, two, three, four, or personnel and other consultants, five different positions, say. So paragraph two says, not all of those are gonna be filled, but all the responsibilities and duties that are defined in the next section will be done.
Yeah, I just want to leave that part in.
So if we, if we scratch that list, so paragraph one reads, the board may, by majority vote, may define responsibilities of any non-member planning staff as deemed necessary, blah, 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 then you don't need to say all the above positions may not be filled because you haven't, you've only defined just planning staff as a single.
Right, but you may, you still need to say the second half of that.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
All duties described will be covered by available personnel. I think you need to say the second half. I agree with you, you don't need the first half because you scratched the list, but I still think you need the second half.
All right, so can I just read it to make sure we all understand what you're asking?
Good.
The board by majority vote may define the responsibilities of any non-member planning staff as deemed necessary to carry out all administrative work related to the proper and efficient implementation of board duties and obligations. All duties are expected to be covered by available staff. Is that good?
I would say all duties described below.
Described? Okay.
Other than that, I agree.
All right.
And then number three becomes number two. All right, is everybody happy with that? Yeah, go ahead.
So you are saying that we eliminate even the two positions that we do have, the administrative assistant and the planning director?
We're not tying his hands on what, how he provides the duties. That's what we're saying.
Right, planning staff can be the planning director and the administrative assistant.
He could tomorrow say, I don't want a planning director, I want a planning coordinator, and they're gonna provide all those duties. He could do that. He's done it before.
Yep.
We don't care as long as all the duties get done.
Exactly.
The only thing that bothers me is I think you need a professional planner, and that still irks me a little bit. There's nothing in here about the, you know, a planning director, you know?
Well, let's go, let me see if I can get the planning director's job description first, okay? That would be a first start, yep. I'll talk to Mark and see if I can get that, okay?
Well, let's keep going then. Bottom of the page, committees and commission memberships. I don't see any need to change any of that, that's the RCPC, those two.
Could I just ask a question? Because I've never heard of the Transportation Advisory Committee or the Metropolitan Policy Committee.
Tim?
Tim, do we still have those, or, I mean, are those things viable? Because I've never seen them or heard of them.
Yeah.
We do have it?
The.
Because I don't know who's on them.
Because of our location in urbanized area, I don't know which one we're in, but it includes Lawrence, I know that.
Okay.
If you are in such an area, in order to get federal transportation dollars, you have to define a metropolitan policy organization, MPO.
Okay.
If you don't have such an organization, you can't get federal dollars.
Okay.
So in New Hampshire, there's four of those, Rockingham, MPO, Strafford, and Nashua and Manchester. And the way that the state and RPCs have agreed is the MPO boundaries would match the planning commission boundaries. So when we appoint representatives to the Rockingham Planning Commission, those people also are representatives to the Metropolitan Policy Organization.
So there's no need to change what we have to?
Yeah, no, all right, I just never heard of it before, okay?
Yeah.
All right, thanks, Tim.
All right, and the third one talks about the CIP, and that does need to be changed. Okay, so we now get down to duties, 225-4. It talks about the chair's duties, and you can read through this. I'm gonna suggest three additional duties of the chair I'd like to put in here.
Yep.
Number one, I think it should say specifically that the chair shall set the agenda, unless anybody has any objection. So I'm adding that somewhere in there. I'm gonna keep that one for, the second thing I would add is the chair shall speak for the board. But I think it needs to be said that, I think this is true of the board of selectmen.
It's true of all boards and committees, all of them, yes.
So I would add, shall speak for the board. And the third item might be a little bit more controversial, but let me throw it out. Shall review and approve the annual planning board budget.
I had that in there, too, I agree with that. Or assist in the department's annual budget preparation, yeah.
Three of ours think alike.
Well, then, then you messed up on that one, Jim.
All right, so does anybody have any objections to adding those to the chair?
Nope.
Okay. Vice chair, I don't think we need to change anything. I suppose we could give Tim more duties, you know, fine with me. But I think that's generic enough. Now, we come to a recording secretary as duties. Now, the recording secretary, it kind of looks like the recording secretary comes from the board, but it doesn't. The recording secretary is a separate position, a contract position. So do we leave it here? Do we pull a recording secretary out and have a separate section on recording secretary? And we can leave it here, it's pretty harmless. It does say what the recording secretary does, I don't think we have to change it.
Yeah.
Jim, do we need to add that the recording secretary must make sure that the draft minutes are made available publicly on the town website, or do you think that RSA 91A thing, it covers it?
91A is pretty broad, I think it covers it.
Covers it, all right.
Yeah, and I know Charlene is very familiar with 91As.
All right, and so have we made arrangements to have her bring, give the draft minutes to Beth so she can publish them on the website?
Yeah, I'm gonna change, there are some things that the planning staff would still do, that's Dee. It's letter Dee, not DeVos.
Yeah.
Dee, planning staff.
Okay, there it is, yeah, okay, I got it, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm gonna make some changes in that. But I'm gonna suggest that the recording secretary is okay where it is.
Okay.
Unless anybody sees any.
Yep, that's no good, Jim.
Okay, so we go to planning staff. I guess we say planning staff because we don't want to say specifically administrative assistant or planning director, so we say planning staff. And the first, number one, ensure draft copies are available to the, she still does that.
Okay, yeah, all right, I got it.
She holds them, and then if anybody asks, she has them. Now, Charlene sends them to her. And number two, I'm gonna change that to read, ensure draft and approved minutes are posted to the town website, because we had that discussion last time, and she did post the draft minutes. At the top of the draft minutes, if you looked at them, they said, you know, these are drafts they may change. And so once, once the draft minutes are approved like they were today, I think you understand, Charlene, you're gonna, you know, take the red stuff off the top, the draft, and just send them to DeVos. Right, right. And she'll post them. And that's the way it works. So now we're into planning staff, and we have quite a number of bullets in terms of responsibilities. It's 738? We can bang through these. Go ahead.
Now, work with the chair to prepare agendas for board meetings.
She'll set the, she'll set the agenda. I'm gonna put there, under chair, I've added that phrase, she'll set the agenda. I added that. We talked about that.
Yep.
No, that's in there, but now here you've got number three, work with the chair, that's gonna be eliminated?
No, she does work with the chair to prepare the board meetings.
Yep.
What really happens behind the scenes, you guys don't see, is I, early in the week, preceding the meeting, I sent an email to John, I said, do you have any topics? Do you have any topics? And they get back to me, and I say, here's the agenda, and then they get back, and we go back and forth, and then we come up with the agenda. So I have the final approval.
We do the same thing, we do the same thing.
She's gonna have input into it, so I'd leave that there. And I think number four still applies, she's still posting the agendas, she's still posting the meeting notices, she's responsible for the meeting notices, the public meeting notices, all that stuff. And she does deliver the draft meeting in our folder, she does deliver it to us, so that doesn't change, I don't think. Number four. Is everybody okay with number four?
Adequate review before the meeting. Last line.
Yeah, I think we ought to leave that in there, that's definitely.
I'm asking, what's the time?
You want to add a specific time?
What do you think is an adequate time?
I don't know, what are you suggesting?
Huh?
Are you suggesting a change to it?
I'm asking for.
It is kind of, it is kind of indefinite, I agree with you.
Right, that's what I'm saying, and what do you think is an appropriate time?
Well, what I think, and what everybody else thinks, it doesn't matter, do we want to make it more definitive is the question, right? Do you want to make it more definitive?
Yes.
Okay, so what would we put in there?
That's what I'm asking.
Do you have a suggestion, Jeff?
Three days?
I think the Friday before the meeting.
The Friday before the meeting. I like that. In fact, John has agreed to that, so.
That's three business days?
So why don't we just put the Friday before the meeting? Instead of for inadequate review.
So material.
Why don't we say for inadequate review before the meeting, at least the Friday, at least the Friday before the meeting? So then she could send it out a couple of days before that, no problem. Does that work?
The only question I would have is what about last-minute stuff that some of the applicants want to give us?
You know, I can't.
The applicants, they do have a deadline.
Yeah, all right, so you're gonna just make them hold to the rules? Okay, I'm good with that.
John and I had this discussion, and John is of the opinion that we really need to get to the point with, and stuff comes in late, sorry.
Okay, I, I agree with that.
Because otherwise, what happens is, human nature, they abuse it, you know, the day before, 11 o'clock before the meeting?
Yes, 3 o'clock for an attorney review?
Yeah, I know.
On the day of our meeting? Yes, I agree with that.
What's very important is this board...
So, you want to make it for Monday, then?
No, 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 Friday seems good, Friday's good.
Just the Friday before the meeting. That's what I added.
Yep, and if it doesn't get in, it doesn't get in. All right, I'm good with that.
Okay.
Yep.
No, we're saying Monday is a nonstarter. It's Friday before the meeting. If it doesn't get in Monday, if it comes Monday, it's too late.
Well...
We're being a little bit hard ass on it, but I think it's important to...
Well, yeah.
Unless you specify, unless there is extenuating circumstances that the board agrees is acceptable.
Yeah, look, yeah, you could add that phrase in there, that's good, Tom. Yeah, you want to, you want to assure yourself in the foot, unless there's an extenuating circumstances...
Extenuating circumstances that the board deems as acceptable.
That's good.
Or the chair.
Should the chair make that decision? I think the chair should do that personally, yeah.
Yeah, that's good.
Put the pressure on me, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Please get this in.
So, what are you changing to?
All right, so you're gonna add exactly what now?
Okay, we're gonna add after the word, number four, after the word "meeting", we're gonna put a comma, at least the Friday before the meeting, unless there are extenuating circumstances agreed to by the chair.
Right, that's good.
That's good, Tom, thank you.
Say that again?
You know, we should have this right up on the thing, and we should be able to change it in word. I know, this would be so much easier if we could do that.
You're right, next time we'll have it all written out, we'll, we'll look at it. Okay, so, number five, that's number four. So, number five, I'm gonna suggest a change there.
I got a, I got a suggestion, Tim.
Okay, well, let me, let me go first.
You're gonna jump on mine.
Oh, let me, let me just go first. Receive and timestamp all.
That was mine.
Okay, so before the, between receive and applications, and timestamp all. And the reason for that is, if, John even said this is the best practice. When the application comes in, they should be timestamped. And we should know, you know, exactly when it was submitted, because that starts the clock. It's a very critical thing. If you look, I looked at Salem, I looked at, uh... I looked at three or four different, they have that in there. And the suggested one from the OSI is to add a timestamp, so...
And if there should be any legal issues, then you, it's documented.
Right.
We don't do that?
No.
We don't timestamp?
What's that?
We don't timestamp the...
I've never seen it.
Application?
No.
Is there a timestamp?
I, I don't know.
I've never, I don't remember seeing it.
Well, we're, we're adding it to the rules, so... There better be one.
Right after receive.
It's number five, receive and timestamp all applications. So, no other changes to number five, I didn't have any other ones.
All right.
Want to take a chance, a minute to look through there? Okay, so, let's move to number six on the, on the top of the next page.
Where did you add that to? I don't see how you're fitting that in.
Okay, and number five, Jeff?
Yeah.
Receive and timestamp all applications. I'm just putting and timestamp all between receive and applications. Okay?
D does that.
Okay, but we're putting it in the rules, Jeff.
I understand it, I'm just saying that she does do that.
I have seen many, uh, applications, I've never seen a timestamp.
Uh, the timestamp is on what she receives in the office when she gets it.
Okay, well, we don't need to debate it.
It's stamped multiple times, it may not be on the copies that we see.
Okay, that it should be harmless. She, she's doing all right.
I'm not saying there's anything wrong with it, I'm just telling you, that's the way she's been doing it.
I think it's important for the planning board to see that timestamp, too. Anyway, we're, number six, I don't think we need to change. Number seven, um, I'm gonna add a D to that. This is correspondence as directed by the chair of the board, I think the first three still are good. I would like to add number, uh, D, or whatever it is, D. No correspondence shall be sent until reviewed and signed by the chair. Everybody okay with that? And again, that may be what's happening now, but I think it's important to put it in there.
No correspondence sent.
No direct, no correspondence shall be sent until reviewed and signed by the chair. Now, that doesn't cover notices of decision. Uh, notices of decision are pretty straightforward. The D sends those out to the abutters and to the applicant and says, this is the decision that the board made. So, the chair doesn't need to sign that. You know, that's just a notice. This is what we voted on, this is the decision we made.
So, that will be notified, it's supposed to be notified by...
Well, no, those, we should get copies of those, but I don't think we need to put it in the rules. Because we know we voted on it, it was in the minutes, and we, we know we voted on it. So, it's not, no mystery to us. Okay, so...
Where were we adding that?
Okay, Jeff, I'll read it again.
Seven D.
I added D, you want me to read it again?
Please.
Okay. No correspondence shall be sent until received, reviewed, and signed by the chair.
And what, by the chair?
No correspondence shall be sent until rece, reviewed, and signed by the chair.
Signed, okay.
Signed by the chair. Sorry. Okay. Having fun, Tom?
Yes.
Yeah, all right, good. No changes to eight and nine, you know, I don't want to go right through them. If you guys read them, if you see any, we need any changes, I don't think we do for those two. Number 10, um... I wanted to add a sentence at the end of it. I don't know, maybe it's not necessary, but I wanted to add the following sentence. The planning staff is responsible for the accuracy of impact fee calculations and assessments. I'm adding that to number 10. Now, tell me if I'm wrong, it may already be in there, it says impact fee account. I, I guess it's sort of implied.
Can you read that again?
But I think it's very important that the impact fee calculations are the responsibility of the staff.
I think it's...
I'm adding a sentence at the end of number 10. After the word "task", the planning staff is responsible for the accuracy of impact fee calculations and assessments. Of impact fee calculations and assessments. In other words, they calculate it, they give it to us, like, like what happened last time. You know, we had a situation where we had two floors, and there was some discussion on it.
Yeah, that's right.
And I think we concluded that it should be two floors. Had we not caught that, that was, that was like $36,000.
Yeah, we would have gotten screwed out of all those impact fees.
I don't, I don't really think we need to...
Yeah.
Add that.
You think it's implied in there, Tim?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is the planning board or the planning...
Staff.
I mean, that, I mean, last, last week, I mean, that was a mis, made a mistake. I mean, that's...
But where is it implied? Where does it say that, that, that the planning staff is responsible for the accuracy?
Says impact fee account.
It says setting up, maintaining, and closing.
Financial tasks include setting up, maintaining, and closing. Escrow accounts, impact fee account, construction loan accounts.
You don't think you need to go further and say, you don't think it's necessary? Okay.
I think that's implied, if you're gonna maintain an impact fee account, you do it correctly.
What does everybody else think?
I mean, you could clarify by saying account and calculation, or something like that, that's sort of a slight variation that...
That's what the responsibility is of taking care of the impact fee account is. You do the proper calculations.
Yeah.
And accountability, that's implied.
I mean, you could add, you could add, do the same for escrow closing accounts. When she comes back and says there's $537.28 left in the escrow.
That's fine, I don't have any problem if everybody agrees with that. So, do you want to go with Tom's compromise? You want to just not put that sentence in?
What did you say it was, Tom, impact fee?
I mean, if account implies calculations, then I think we're fine.
So, do you want to put impact fee calculations?
Account and calculation is...
Accounting and calculations, all right.
That was just a thought, you know, if you, if you want the clarity.
Well, I guess I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go with Tim, and Tim's saying it's implied, I, I, you know, as long as they know that that's, that's true, that's important. Because this, you know, it's a very, very critical number. There's a lot of dollars.
Can we, can we have a, at our next workshop meeting, can we go over impact fees?
Yes.
The accounts and how it, how it is being calculated? Because is square footage on a residential home with two floors, is that being calculated by the footprint? Or is that square footage? I don't know, I don't, you know?
Square footage.
Okay, so then, why wasn't a commercial building square footage? Why was it footprint?
She made a mistake, is all I'm saying. Because we have so few multi-story commercial buildings.
Do we know, do we know how Exeter Med was done?
I'm assuming it's square footage.
Maybe, maybe we could find that out.
I'm not sure about that, Tim. Well, we'll talk about it next time. Because Exeter Med may be a problem too, but let's talk about it next time. Let's move on, that's not really what we, I think, I agree with Laurie, we should talk about it. We'll do it next time. Okay, so, scratch that sentence then. Move to 11, I don't see any need for any, um... I'm a little bit puzzled on that, but it says that the planning staff will make onsite inspections. I don't, does that happen, Tim?
Organize maybe, not make, but organize onsite inspections?
No, that's not talking about the...
Isn't that called enforcement inspections?
Well, we went to do Milton Cat, who organized that? When we did the walkthrough?
Oh, you mean, um, site walks?
Yeah.
That's different than this.
Is that what this is?
I think that's different.
Oh, all right, it's a different thing, okay.
Yeah, site walk is number nine, right up, above there.
Yeah, number nine is a site walk.
All right, I'm sorry, okay, I'm sorry.
It doesn't, it doesn't come up very often. You know?
I'm, I'm sorry. What is 11?
I, I think that's, that would be the building, the code enforcement.
Well, yeah, I mean, I, I think this was more, if, if we had a question about a particular item, you know, subdivision or site plan, we'd ask D to...
Send her out to take a look and research it?
Certainly, I mean, I don't care if we get rid of it.
Just leave it in there?
Well, I mean...
It's not, it's not harmful.
And leave it or get rid of it, it, it doesn't matter.
So, we'll just leave it in there? We don't need to take it out. Okay, so we go to number 12. This is her, well, I should say the planning staff's responsibility in terms of the master plan. I think that needs to stay in there. Number 13, it gets into the capital improvement, it says the planning staff gets involved in that. Is that in fact true? Is that, is, do they do? So, D gets involved?
Yeah, she's, she's involved in that.
Okay, I didn't know. 14, training updates, this is what we referred to before, and D does a pretty good job of, you know, laying out this, you know, possible training for people, particularly new people. So, you guys should hear pretty soon. If you don't, just, you know, ask her for some suggestions. Number 15, I think that should stay, number 16 should stay, I guess. Is there anything additional that we want to add for duties? That's plenty.
That's more than I know, yeah.
Okay, so we go into, we're really doing good here, we're into meetings? I don't have, okay, go ahead.
Okay, on building inspector, I've always wanted to know what his exact duties are.
Building inspector, I'll tell you what I think. Building inspector is the town manager, and he is responsible for enforcing zoning ordinances in town, any violations. And we really don't have anything to do...
It's the building code he enforces.
What?
He enforces the building code.
That's what I said, yeah.
Okay.
He enforces it.
Well, I can't hear you here.
So, it's not, he's not, you know, what confused me is he's listed as a staff for the planning board. He's really not a staff for the planning board. Is he, Tim?
That's correct. So, in our case, Mike Dorman does two things. He's the building inspector, which means building permits go through him. He goes out, makes sure the two-by-fours are in the right place, and the concrete was poured correctly, and, you know, all those constructing related stuff.
Structural integrity.
And he's also our code enforcement officer. So, he is in charge of making sure that all of the, um... All the commercial residential properties are complying with zoning. Most of the time, I mean, unless he's driving by and happens to catch one, most of the time, somebody complains about something, oh gee, my neighbor's doing something suspicious. And so, he gets a call, and then he goes to investigate. I would say, most of the complaints, I think, come in like that. I mean, you know, one person, unless you hire him to drive around town 24 hours a day, you're not gonna find, you know...
Okay, so who does he report to?
The town manager?
Mike, uh, he report, for, sorry, reports to the town manager.
Do you don't think anywhere here that should be listed?
No, it's not really part of our purview. People mistake and think that, that, that the zoning, that the, you know, that the building inspector is part of a planning board. Not.
And Karen, he's an employee of the town, and it's covered under that RSA 376.
Okay, so we use covered under that?
Yep.
Yeah. And I think when Mike was out, Mark, like, got, got a part-time person, so...
He did, he did.
It's Mark's responsibility to find somebody.
Yep.
Do we have somebody else there now?
Ma, uh, Mark, Mike Dorman, he's doing it now.
There's somebody else up there?
Yeah.
Temporary.
Okay, so, okay, so we move on to meetings? I didn't see anything in the meeting section to change, all the way down to disqualification?
Yeah, I, I have a, on meetings.
Okay.
I, I'd like to, um, I would like to, you know, say that our first Wednesday of the month is workshop.
Add that as another paragraph?
And then, the second Wednesday, I don't know, maybe that's called the regular meeting, and that would be with public hearings?
Yeah.
And I had brought this up before when we amended the rules and procedures, that, you, we have, sometimes we have many public hearings in a night. And I think our cutoff point to hear a new public hearing should be 9 o'clock. We finished what we're working on, if it's 9 o'clock, we're working on a public hearing, we finish that. But we don't take on any more new afternoon, I mean...
I agree.
We were here till almost 11 o'clock. I mean, I don't, if that's the case, then I really don't want to be on this board anymore.
The only thing I would say to it is this, that if we have, like, we had four hearings last time. Let's say we got through two of them, and we didn't want to start the other ones. We probably should vote to accept them as complete. So, we fulfill that 30-day timeframe. We don't have to open the hearing, we just vote that they're complete. Because if we don't do that, by the next meeting, that time period would have elapsed.
Yeah.
So, we could, we could vote that they're complete, or not complete. That's, but I agree with the, I'm not sure if I agree with the 9 o'clock. That's, but I agree with the, I'm not sure if I agree with the nine o'clock. I like going and getting things done, but I would go with nine thirty. I'm just maybe an outlier there. Maybe I'm crazy.
Yeah, but you know, don't forget, there's some people at work, and, and they're doing this as a volunteer to, you know, for community service, and you have to be sensitive to that.
Yeah.
So I, I agree with Laurie.
Agree with nine o'clock?
Nine o'clock.
Okay.
I would just say that if it's 9:07 and we have a very basic thing, then the poor person's been waiting. You know, we could maybe vote to, to hear that.
So the chair could add discretion.
Chair's discretion.
Yeah, of course, we could add that, but.
Sure.
So we could write that, I, maybe I could.
You know, last, last year, we had a lot that came before us, and it was like every meeting was very long.
Are you trying to scare me away already?
No, no. We're trying to keep you. That's why we want to stop it at nine o'clock.
I just think we're gonna, I just think we're gonna get more and more with, you know?
You don't scare either.
I support the nine. I'm just saying, if there was a five-minute hearing.
Well, yeah.
Yeah. And, and, you know, and it's up to the chair to get consensus from the board as to whether they want to continue. So if three of us say, I'm tired, we're not doing this, then that's consensus that we stop.
I don't have the exact words, but I can add that to A, A, what she just said. I'll, I'll write something up.
Just put what she said.
What she said, yeah, there you go. The other thing is, it's up to the chair, I know at the beginning of the meeting, if I see something that's gonna take very little time, I put it up front. So I did that last time, and I think that's the way to do it.
Yeah.
Okay, so if you don't mind, I'll take, either you or I could write something. We don't have to do it now.
Okay, okay.
If you want to write it.
225-5A.
Yeah, she's gonna, she's gonna add it to the regular meeting. She's gonna say that the first one is workshop, the second one is the hearings, and that, and that we would close at nine o'clock. So it would be added to paragraph A. Okay? Special meetings, I don't think we need to change that. Non-public. We very rarely have non-public, Tim. Have you ever had one?
Yeah, we had a couple, but they were few and far between.
Question back on, to have a nine o'clock cutoff, what do we, what do we do? If there's hearings left?
They would be, they would be, they would be continued, right?
But you haven't opened them yet, potentially.
So then, what Jim said, we would have to at least.
Vote that it's complete.
Vote as complete. No, I mean, you could, I mean, you could open it and, and continue it, but, you know, in the same sentence.
You could do that, but why do it?
But when are, I mean, what are you gonna continue it to?
But you don't have to open it. It's not required.
The next regular meeting.
Which would be in a month.
Right.
It could be the workshop meeting. I think that's what he's saying. So now we have the next.
At the work, at the workshop meeting?
If, if you have a situation where you didn't get to a hearing, you voted it complete, you can't wait another month. You, you have to now have that hearing at the workshop. I think that could happen, right?
I mean, that, I mean, that, that seems only fair. I mean.
You could continue a meeting for how long? I think you can continue up to 65 days, right?
Yeah.
So maybe it's better than what he said. We would vote complete, open the hearing, close it, and then contin, then, not close it, but continue it. So that's how you would take care of it. And then you got 65 minutes. So we'll, I'll come up, maybe Laurie can come up with something. We'll come up with the next. We don't have to nail it down now, but your point's well taken about that. Is that what you meant?
Well, yeah.
Yeah, because you could do it rather than just vote it's complete. You could continue it.
Well, I mean, I, I think you, if we're gonna have a cutoff, which I'm not arguing for or against, in the agenda, then you probably want to list, accept it's complete, accept it's complete, accept it's complete, public hearing number one, public hearing number two, public hearing number three.
Yeah, you could do it that way too, yeah.
So.
So you accept it as complete, but you don't open that hearing.
That's true.
You accept the next one. You just accept them all as complete.
Right.
Then move back. That's a good idea.
And I guess the other thing, if that's our policy, you need to make, make it well-known that if hearings, you know, we're not going to hear a public hearing, well, I don't know. There's, there's got to be careful.
So we can discuss it more in the next.
We can discuss it more. I mean, we, we have, like, we'll put up, we'll put up something for discussion next time.
Yeah.
Okay? So nothing on, on public cancellations? I don't think that needs to be. The quorum is the quorum. Appointment of alternates, and that, that is what it is. Disqualification, I think it's important that members need to understand how you become disqualified. We should read through this because it's important that you understand that. And basically, it says, "No member shall participate in deciding any question or set upon any hearing in which the member has a direct personal or financial interest in the outcome that differs from the interest of other citizens." And kind of the way I see that is, it's financial or personal interest, you know, when in doubt, you should probably recuse yourself. That's kind of how I feel about it. But this is the wording right out of 67314, which is handout 11. So I'm not necessarily saying we have to change it. I just make sure everybody understands when you should recuse yourself. Now, it does provide for a vote in, in number two on the next page. "The board shall, upon the request of that member or any member, vote on the question of whether the member should be disqualified." So when it comes in doubt, any member can say, well, I think we should vote on this. You know, I think this guy is disqualified, you know, shouldn't sit for this particular one. This shouldn't come up that often. I mean, you should be very careful about stating your opinion on, you know, you can't state your opinion on Facebook that I'm against this, or for it, or whatever. That's very dangerous to do it, so. So I don't think we need to change that. I just thought everybody should understand that. So we go, go on to personal electronic devices at meetings. I'm not gonna say anything, Charlene, I'm on your phone. Just kidding you. So you should, everybody's phone should be muted for the meetings, but, you know, I think we need to add a section on remote meetings.
I was just gonna say that. Yep.
The chair or the planning director needs to have their phone on, you know, if you get emails or, so we need to add maybe a paragraph or a sentence that says only the chair or the planning director, or only, you know, specific people that need to have the phone on for emails or phone, so I'll, I'll write a sentence to that effect. You know, I'll, I'll also throw out, do we need a complete, do we need to add to the rules a complete section on remote meetings? I don't know. I mean, it could be a lot that we could put in here for remote meetings, but that, now somebody has to write it.
Yeah, I, I would, I would say, one, let's hold off.
Yeah.
Yes, once we're out of the emergency order.
Which is when, Tim?
Well, I, the way it's going, it could be 2023. I don't know.
By Christmas?
But I mean, more and more, boards are communicating remotely. I mean, it's, and now that the, the virus kind of forced a lot of us into it, whether we wanted to or not, you know, it's, it's not all bad sitting at home with your shoes off, participating in a meeting.
I think it's good for applicants too, because, you know, they don't have to drive all the way from Manchester or what have you.
Yep, I mean, there are, yeah, I mean, there are cases when, particularly if a project is being introduced, where it's probably, who's the applicant to, to be here? But nonetheless. So anyway, I, I think if we, if we just hold off, because after the virus thing, things are gonna change anyway.
You can always do it later.
I'd imagine that the state's going to provide some sort of guidance, and that we could reference that
Yeah.
as our proper procedures.
Right, right. Okay. All right, order of business. I didn't have any changes on that. Oh, wait a second, I did. Under order of business, I added a three. Uh, I can't read my writing. Oh, I just wanted to clarify that the chair may change the order of public hearings at his discretion. That happens anyway. You know, like I said, if I see a, a hearing that's only gonna take 15 minutes or whatever, or 10 minutes, I put it up front. So I'm just adding number three, the chair may change the order of public hearings at his, his, his or her discretion. Does anybody have any objection to that?
No.
I didn't see that in here, but I knew that happened.
Oh, well, number two.
Sorry, Tim?
The board may by a vote at a regular meeting change the above order to better accommodate the public or the board.
Yeah, I just wanted to add that the chair may change the order of public hearings. I'm not talking about the order of, you know, the, the complete order of all the different things. I'm just saying, public hearings, within the public hearings. You know, I put this public hearing first versus that public hearing.
Well.
That's what that is. Pardon? That's what number two says.
So number, number two says the board has to vote on it?
Says the board may vote at the regular meeting. I'm saying that rather than voting, the chair, by his prerogative, his or her, may change the order of public hearings. So it's not covered in number two.
So do you want to just change the board to the chair?
No, I think you still need that. The board may, you know, want to change things around. That's fine. So leave that in, but also give the chair the prerogative on public hearings. You don't need to have a vote. Or specifically for public hearings. The board, the chair may change the order of public hearings at his or her discretion. Okay? All right. Voting, uh, I didn't see any changes there. Subdivision and site plan review, I, all the way through there, I didn't see any need for changes there. In fact, all the way through the end, I have nothing until you get to communications, unless somebody else has something.
No.
Okay, time check. We're at 8:12. We're doing good. All right, communications, um, let me read what I had here.
The last page, 225-7.
225-7, I'm saying number A, or letter A. I was gonna add a sentence. Maybe it's not necessary. Again, maybe I'm going too far here, but I'm adding after the first sentence there in A, "Staff will ensure the chair and the board receive correspondence at a timely manner." Maybe that's already covered.
It's too much.
Yeah, I don't think we need to say that.
Don't, don't put that in.
I don't think we need to say that.
No?
No, Dee will let you know. Beth lets me know when I get mail right away, so she'll do the same thing.
Okay, I have nothing till the end, and, and number of the amendments at the end, I think we need to put, and I have the actual OSI wording somewhere here. I have the OSI suggested wording for that, that section.
For amendment?
Let me, let me read the wording that the OSI has compared to ours. Okay, so their suggested section amendment reads as follows. "The board's rules or procedure may be amended by a majority vote of its members." Okay, that's par, the sentence one. "The board shall hold a public hearing prior to the adoption of new rules or amendment of existing rules. Notice for the time and place of the hearing shall be provided in RSA 675-7. The amended procedure shall be filed with the municipal clerk." So I'm suggesting that we do that. I'm not sure why it only says two successive meetings. It doesn't say anything about a public hearing, but I think we had public hearings before, didn't we?
I, um, do a little more research. I, I think the, the first mention of a public hearing in the, in the OSI thing that you just read, I think that's not correct. I think they.
You don't think that suggestion is correct?
I think they meant public meeting.
You don't need a public hearing now?
Not a public hearing.
Okay.
I'll, I'll check on, I'll check on it, because some, somewhere else, I don't remember where, but just tonight, there there's a conflict where it says just public meeting, so. Now, I'll check on that.
So you don't think we need to, to add public hearing then?
So.
I don't really want to have a public hearing. We don't need one.
I mean, if the, if the RSAs are consistent and say public hearing, then yeah, we need to change ours to say public hearing.
Well, I don't see that. The only place I saw it was in there suggested.
Yeah. So the reason that we have two successive meetings was because people were not playing nice together. So there'd be a three-member quorum, and they'd change the rule of procedure. And two people come back the next night and, you know, next morning and find out, oh gee, what the heck went on? So, um, that was the reason for two.
So your suggestion is just leave it the way it is?
I, I would.
Okay. Did anybody have any objection?
No.
No.
No, that's fine.
I know everybody wants to get done, so. All right, so that's it. I'll put something together. If, if Laurie can give me a couple of things, and I'll, I'll send it out to everybody, so you'll see in red what the changes are for next meeting. And we will cover this next meeting because we only have the one hearing.
Yeah.
Now, the only other subject that I have, you have something?
Yeah, no, I just wanted to add that, so you're gonna make all the corrections.
Yeah. I'm gonna send it out. It's gonna be, you know, in red what the changes are, and know exactly what the changes are.
So I would say next, the next meeting, would, we would consider that our first reading.
That'll be the first.
Yeah.
We're not in any rush to do this or do it right.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we will.
Okay, so that's that topic. I only had one other thing, unless anybody else has anything. Okay, 71 Plastow Road. Does that ring a bell?
Oh, yes.
71 Plastow Road.
Are you gonna give us an update on that?
Well.
If any.
I went, I asked Mike to give me an update, and this is Mike's update. It's still in the court. There's an appeal before the Supreme Court of New Hampshire. Now, I was surprised to hear that, because I remember last time we heard from Dee was that, you know, he had, he'd run out of appeals. But Mike says it's still before the Supreme Court of New Hampshire. It's still under appeal. It has nothing to do with evictions, or the governor's order on evictions. It's under appeal. This is what Mike said.
It was my understanding that every time it goes before the Supreme Court and gets shut down, he goes to another part of the law to create this all over again as far as an appeal. He doesn't use the same process. He, he goes to another section. So there's gotta be some kind of a, you know, a, a statute of limitations for this, and how many times it goes before the Supreme Court, I'm thinking. I don't know. Go ahead.
When does the planning board revoke the site plan? Because we haven't done that.
So the, the problem is, I would say, that just complicates things, and what, what does it accomplish?
Gets rid of the cars.
No, it doesn't.
No?
He's in violation of the site plan when the car is there. So if we revoke, revoke the site plan, he's still in violation of the previous site plan, so it's, you know, the one thing you don't want to do is revoke the site plan and then have him file yet another appeal because the planning board revoked the site plan, and we shouldn't have done it, and blah, 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 blah. That could add another year of appeals and reappeals, you know. I, I just don't see that we can accomplish anything, and it may in fact hurt the person.
But he's not the owner any longer. There's a, there's a new owner there.
There's a bank that owns it.
No, there's a new owner.
No, there's a, a private, a private person bought it from the bank.
Just for Tom's benefit and Charlene, this is a property on 125, where this guy for four years have kept maybe 30 cars. I think you're aware of where it is, Tom.
Everybody knows where it is, yeah.
But it's just like, you know, something's gotta give here, because it's gone on for so long. It's just embarrassing, actually. Whatever.
Do, do we have an update on any adjudication from the judge with Milton Cat?
I have nothing on that. Do you, Tim?
No.
I guess the judge has not decided on it, so. It's surprising. I thought he would have.
No, especially if it was just for ministerial work. Okay?
No.
Okay?
Anything else from anybody? Pretty good. I'll close meeting at 8:20.
All right.
Thank you all.